Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mandy, could you please call the roll?
DeYoung.
Here.
Branderhorsen, here. DeAnstruck?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Spore?
Here.
Carlstone? He's not on line yet, but he may be joining.
Okay. Can I get a motion for approval of the tentative agenda?
So moved.
For Banstra Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, pose no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeAnstruck?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Branderhorsen?
Yes.
Motion passed. I have some appointments to make here. I would like to appoint Chris Myers to serve on the Community Development Committee. Chris is passionate about the unique charm and character of Pella and wants to advocate for the advancement of business in our community. If approved, Chris's new three-year term will expire on August 1, 2026. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Spore?
DeYoung, Spore, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, pose no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
Branderhorsen?
Yes.
DeAnstruck?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes. Motion passed. I'd like to reappoint Dennis Vanderbeek to the Community Development Committee. Dennis has attended 20 of the 25 meetings held during his most recent term, which began in 2020. If approved, Dennis, this new three-year term will expire on August 1, 2026. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Spore?
Banstra Spore, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, pose no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeAnstruck?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Branderhorsen?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion passed. I would like to reappoint Karen Benhamer to the Community Development Committee. Karen has served on this committee since 2020, attending 19 of 25 meetings held. If approved, Karen's new three-year term will expire on August 1, 2026. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
So moved.
Branderhorsen, DeYoung, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, pose no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Branderhorsen?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
DeAnstruck?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
Motion passed. And I'd like to reappoint Jerry Brummel to the Community Development Committee. Jerry has served on this committee since 2004, attending 12 of the 25 meetings that were held during his most recent term. If approved, Jerry's new three-year term will expire on August 1, 2026. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
For Branderhorsen, Banstra, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, pose no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Branderhorsen?
Yes.
DeAnstruck?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Motion passed. Do you have a motion entering the closed session pursuant to Iowa Code, Chapter 21.5, Paragraph 1, "To Discuss Strategy with Counsel in Matters That Are Presently in Litigation or Where Litigation Is Eminent, Where Its Disclosure Would Likely to Prejudice or Disadvantage the Position of the Governmental Body in That Litigation"?
So moved.
Support.
DeYoung, Branderhorsen, all in favor, please say yes, pose no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Branderhorsen?
Yes.
DeAnstruck?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
All right, so we will be heading into the other room for a closed session. While we're in closed session, you all are welcome to stay here. We will return when we are ready to go back into open session and continue our meeting from there. All right, we are back in an open session. I don't believe there's any motion coming out of our closed sessions. We will move on with tonight's agenda. The next item on the agenda is a public forum. Anyone wishing to address counsel regarding any agenda item, ask you, please step forward to this microphone, state your name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Ann Summit, 1435 Hazel Street, here in Pella. This is kind of strange, but last weekend, two weekends ago, I had my 50th class reunion. And a lot of people came back from all over the U.S. and Canada for this reunion. The comment, time after time after time, was, "Pella, you have a niche. You have your niche. It's gorgeous. Don't ruin it." You know, and I think what they were alluding to was the historic preservation that has happened within our community. And some of them haven't been back for 25, 30 years, and they are just amazed at what's still here. So I am asking for you to really think about supporting the new Sculte district tonight. You know, we just don't know what we have until we see it through the eyes of somebody else. Thank you.
So just so everyone's aware, we will have a public hearing about that coming up here. So anybody have anything else, any other agenda item you want to address? All right.
Do you have time to comment on the historic district later?
Yeah, we will have a public hearing for that specific thing. It's coming up, yeah. So can I get a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Banstra, Branderhorsen, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, pose no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeAnstruck?
Yes.
Branderhorsen?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, so now we move into the public hearing to consider an application to form this Sculte Garden Historic District.
Mike? Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to direct everyone's attention to the big board, and also for those watching at home on Pella Fiber tonight. As Mayor Ward stated, tonight's public hearing is in regards to proposed historic district. It would be the Sculte Garden Historic District. And just to orientate everyone on this, it would be the yellow highlighted area that we have here. So up to the north, we have Lincoln Street with Lincoln Elementary right up here. Washington Street to the south, Main Street over to the east, and Broadway Street over to the west. Now, when we talk about historic overlay zones under the city zoning code, it's important to note that generally they're geographically cohesive areas with significant concentrations of buildings that possess a high degree of historical integrity. And also, it is also important to note that they're somewhat unique in the state of Iowa. In fact, in fact, if we were to approve this ordinance this evening, this ordinance would be approved by the Pella City Council. It would be the second historic district that we have in Pella. The first one was the collegiate neighborhood historic district, which was approved in 2021. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the guidelines that the city code regulates, as far as forming the historic district, they're listed up on the big board. But again, you can see that they do have a high degree of significant history, American history, architectural, archaeology, or cultural, must possess an integrity of location, design, setting, and materials. And we have a few other items that we have up here as well. So there's a fairly high standard to become a historic district under the city code. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the legislative requirements to become a historic district, as far as it's really a property owner-driven process, so it's the property owners within the district that petition the city. And in this case, what the city code requires is that you have to have at least 50% of support from the property owners, the total parcels within the district. The application that we're considering this evening includes just shy of 64% of the total parcels of the property owners. And then as we have a second measurement, both of these have to be over 50%. And then we also have that 50% from the property owners of the owners, the total public street frontage within the area. The application that we're considering this evening is just shy of 58%. So both those two thresholds have been met under the city code. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, if this historic district is approved, it would establish design standards within the district. And generally, when we talk about design standards, the easiest way to remember this is if you have any type of activity on your property that draws a building permit, it could fall under design review by the Historic Preservation Commission. And generally, those items would be new construction, new accessory buildings, additions or alterations which require a building permit. And it is also important to note that the commission does have authority to review demolition permits as well. Now, as far as commercial properties, which may be in the district or would involve multifamily, it's important to note that those properties would just under the normal city code would be subject to the community development design review, followed by any type of proposed historic district overlay zone review as well. But the primary one would be the Community Development Committee that's under the existing code for commercial properties. Now, it is also important to note that the following are not required to have a historic review, alterations that are not visible from the public street, and alterations that are visible from the public street, but they're not required in building permit. Under those cases, it's voluntary review that's encouraged under city code. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, it is important to note, if we do qualify for design review by the Historic Preservation Commission, the design guidelines that will be used by the commission is for contributing structures. So these would be the structures that the state of Iowa reviewed that say contribute historically to the district. They would be under the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation and Guidelines for Historic Buildings. For non-contributing structures, so this would be all the other structures that were non-contributing in the district, they'd be under the Dutch Residential Design Review District Guidelines on this as well. And those are guidelines that have been in place at the city for several years as well. And finally, I would like to mention that in the case when it comes to design permits, whether it's a design permit or demolition permit, any person that is agreed by the decision of the Historic Preservation Commission may appeal that decision to the city council. So ultimately, a good way to look at this, if we do have a property that is required to obtain a design permit, and there's a disagreement with the commission and the property owner, the ultimate judge and arbiter of this would be the Pella City Council. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, it is very important to note for council's consideration that we had a couple of boards review this proposed ordinance. The Historic Preservation Commission reviewed proposed ordinance at their April 17 meeting and approved it unanimously. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this proposed ordinance in the district at their June 26 meeting and approved it on a four to three vote. Now, based off staff's finding and considering that two city boards did review this application and that the application meets the minimum requirements for the district, it does appear to have property owners supporting the district that meets the city guideline requirements. And it's also been approved by the appropriate parties, so this is the state of Iowa. Given the total of all these items listed above, city staff is recommending approval of the ordinance that would establish this Sculte Garden Historic District. With that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes our presentation. We would more than happy to answer any questions that the council may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. I know I've received several emails concerning this. Is there any other communications other than what we have in our packet?
There was just one, and it's in your packet.
Okay.
In support, yep.
Okay. So council, start with you, comments concerning this item.
I'll kick it off. I am supportive of the concept of the historic district. I question whether going to the other side of Main Street and the other side of Broadway isn't a bit of a stretch.
Oh, I'm not kidding. I thought you were waiting for a rebuttal.
Sure.
I wholeheartedly support this project. I've been involved in the first historic district, and it's a lot of heavy lifting. And I would love to thank the committee for this. It's not easy. I don't know that people know what's involved with this. Bruce, masterful in your descriptions of the homes. I thought I was reading William Page's rendition. I mean, you have done a masterful job. This is the way that we can keep our community and our heritage intact. It's also a way that oftentimes, some of our older homes are the affordable homes in our community. And it's a way to keep them protected from demolition and putting price, the homes that are out of the price reach for young couples and individuals wanting to move into our community. So thank you, commission. I'm just really blown away by this position that you've taken and the job that you've done in your documentation. I'm in full support.
So, yeah, I'm in support as well, too. I think of one of the things, Lynn mentioned demolition. I'm probably not as afraid of that as, there's an area in Oski on High Avenue East that was called the Paradise Block. Beautiful, big Victorian homes, all carved up into apartments now. And I think my guess is that this would help prevent some of that as we go forward. My question was a little bit like Mark's. I, you know, the original Sculte Gardens, I don't think extended west of Broadway and east of Main. There was one thought that I had, and the second thought that maybe somebody can answer, that there's two relatively big apartment complexes on each side of that, both on Broadway and on Main. I wouldn't know why they might be included or not. And so that was a question I had, but I didn't know whether you could, particularly the one on Main, which is between, if you can isolate that or not. So some, maybe that could be answered partway through that.
Yeah, I think just in the interest of making sure everybody can hear, those questions have been asked. Someone hopefully will be able to answer, but I just sent you to do it up here so that on our live feed and everything, everybody can hear it. So is there any more comments out of council before we invite them?
The only comment I have, I'm all for it, is, I'd say I was a little surprised just by the percentages of the folks in favor of it. And I wondered if, how much of that is yes versus no, or yes versus no comment? If there's a certain number of folks that just didn't respond, or if it was actually all yes or no votes that led to the 57%, 63%.
Okay, Spencer, you have anything you wanted to comment on?
I appreciate it. I agree with the comments Lynn made that the store group has done a fantastic job in research and proposals, so thank you all for that hard work. Secondly, my curiosity has already been questioned by the council. My additional comment would be, any further value to the four to three vote from planning and zoning? What was the main crux of the defense? And my inference is that it was similar to the boundaries, but any comments on that from either Mr. Bidos or other committee members that may be in attendance? I'll hang up and listen.
Gerald, could you comment on the meeting, the P and Z meeting, what the crux of the discussion there was?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The crux was the reference to the properties outside the Sculte Garden and the general government overreach.
Same things that were mentioned here, okay. All right, anything else, council? Otherwise, we can open this up to the public for comment. Now, I, you know, we kind of like to, well, Bruce, I'm sure you're going to give us some comment. I'm not holding you to three minutes because you have a lot of information that I'm sure you'd like to share and probably will answer some of these questions that, so you have as much time as you need.
So thank you. My name is Bruce Porchi, live at 614 Monroe. I'm vice chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. And just like to say, on behalf of the commission, we're really pleased and proud to bring the Sculte Garden Historic District to the council for this vote. So I'm so excited for this opportunity. I've spent over two years working on this project and just spent hundreds of hours into research and meeting with neighbors and submitting applications to the State Historic Preservation Office. They came up and said that they absolutely have no problem with this becoming a historic district. So Mark, to address your question, why it extends outside of the actual Sculte Garden itself? And I allude to this somewhat in the booklet I think you have in your packet. But when the Sculte Garden was built, it was a, became a very desirable place to live. And there was some really interesting, architecturally interesting houses built along there. In fact, two of the homes on Broadway are on the National Register of Historic Places. And a lot of these homes were built either at the same time as some of the Sculte Garden homes and some of them earlier, but because the Sculte Garden was such a desirable place to live, these homes were built around there. And I think it's only fair to include those in there because they were influenced by the Sculte Garden. And let's see, you got a question on?
Dave asked about the yes, if it was all yes or yes votes or no comment votes?
Yeah, so anything that we did not get a response back was counted as a no vote. So all the yeses were absolutely yes affirmative. There were several people that either lived out of state or any properties here that we were not able to contact, or there were some people that were just gone and we were not able to get hold of them. So if they did not give us a yes, then it was counted as a no. And I'm sure there's some that if we'd been able to get a hold of them, that would have been yes. And then there was a question on?
I have a question on the two apartment complexes.
Yeah, and so part of that is because those two apartment complexes are adjacent to the Sculte Garden. But also, and I think Gerald, maybe you can help me out on this, but historic districts are supposed to be contiguous, more or less continuous properties. And so rather than carving out little corners here and there, it just kind of made sense to include those in there. So is that semi accurate?
No, you're absolutely correct. Our ordinance on the books says we have to include a bunch of parcels. So that's why we made it contiguous.
They're also non-contributing, right?
Correct, yes. Yes, they're considered non-contributing, but they are part, because they're located in the district, they're part of the district. So if we took them out, we'd have two less no votes, I guess, so we could increase our percentage.
What does non-contributing mean?
So contributing, as far as like the State Historic Preservation Office is concerned, would be properties that would be eligible for grants and state tax credits and that type of thing. And also, I think it affects how they would be classified if they wanted to either rebuild or alter the appearance of their building.
They're also constructed outside of the period of significance?
Yes, one of them is, one of them isn't, so, yeah, that's a good point, too. I think that's less than 50 years old is not considered contributing.
For commercial and residential?
Yes. Yep.
Okay. Thanks, Bruce.
Yeah.
I think, I think the questions I heard you answered, I think, from the council anyways.
I'll add one word to that, Bruce. Let's say one of those apartments had a major fire like we have seen in this community, and there needs to be a rebuilding of that. What would it be, right now, both of those are built very functional, very practical, you know, for apartments. What changes or not changes if the owner would want to do something similar and not have Dutch fronts and not have those things? How would that work in your group that would look, view that?
Yeah, since they're non-contributing, they wouldn't have to have a Dutch front, I don't believe. Now, whether they would have to be built according to the state, Lauren, you can probably answer this better than I can.
No, they're non-contributing, so they wouldn't have to abide by the Secretary of Interior Standards for rehabilitation. They're not considered part, while they are within the boundaries, they are not considered a significant building within that district, and so they would not have to meet the standards of reconstruction. Other historic properties may, if, if they're using state or federal tax credits. So that's by the city code, so the city code would require that any new buildings, right, meet the Dutch standards?
Dutch design review standards, yeah. Well, not, so it would just fall under the standard city code.
Right.
Because district is not, Dutch design review standards, is it, is in the state?
I read something about that, but I couldn't quite follow what was, if that would have to?
Gerald, can you clear that up for us?
Yes, if the apartment buildings build down, they would not be subject to any design requirements.
None whatsoever. There's just normal city code.
Normal city code, they're built, or normal city code, set back zoning requirements.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate your time. It hurts you to approve.
I'm sure there's more people that want to comment, so if you do, please step up to Mike Thornton.
Wayne Steenstra, I live at 1005 Broadway. And first, I want to address Mark's concern about being a stretch on the houses on both sides of Broadway Street. And two of the houses that I own are on the National Register, and they're on the west side of Broadway Street. And also, when you have a, you know, a neighborhood of homes, the neighborhood is, the house across the street. And most of those houses on both Broadway and Main Street fill in, or fall into the category of being part of the neighborhood. And I just might encourage the council to support this. I think it's very important to enact this, to protect the properties that people have invested in. Having an older home is sometimes a little more expensive than just a regular home. And it provides protection from someone building something that's way ultra-modern and out of character than everything. And that's one thing that I think we need to protect here in Pella, if we want to be, you know, inviting to outsiders to see our architecture in our town, and we need to maintain that. Thank you.
I'm Sean Thomas, live at 902 Franklin Street, Pella. I want to thank all the work Bruce has done, the Pella Preservation Trust has done in encouraging these overlays of historic districts. I think not only this, there are some others that hopefully will come into the pipeline. I think they do help maintain a neighborhood's integrity, value, and the curiosity of these towns. I have yet to see people driving up and down historic streets looking at duplexes or apartment buildings. They tend to look at these old homes. Some of you know that I've gone through great extents recently to move an old home and save an old home. And if I had an opportunity to protect mine under a historic district, I would wholeheartedly do it because after all the work I've done, I'm concerned, I'm concerned who might be my next neighbor. The temptation to tear down a home and put up a multi-unit, I understand it. I understand it from a standpoint of, we have a housing crunch here. But there's a lot of lots for sale on Realtor.com that can facilitate brand-new homes as well. So I think these historic districts need to be maintained, preserved, and supported by the city itself. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Rhonda Carmo, and I live at 510 Broadway, and I'm the chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. I just wanted to address, you had asked about the no votes for planning and zoning. One of them was Mark's concern, another one was that they felt that the percentage of yes votes wasn't high enough. I think in elections nowadays, 67% is pretty good. And another one was concerned about demolition of historic homes, about not being able to do that. I just wanted to say that, living in a historic home and living in a historic district, I have had a Realtor call me, I think, four times in the time that we've lived there to see if we would be interested in selling our house, because they had people that were interested in a historic home and couldn't find one. So I just, there are people who enjoy new homes, there are people who enjoy old homes. And I think we need to preserve the areas in our community where we have historic homes because there are people who come to town looking for those homes. And I know that there are Realtors who will say that they have a hard time meeting those people's needs. So I thank you for considering this district, and I thank you for your time. As Bruce, that you will approve it. Thanks.
Anyone else? Anyone else?
Hi. All right. My name is Rhonda Bradley, I live at 505 Columbus Street. I'm a member of the Historic Preservation Commission in Pella. I have been for about a year and a half. Listing some credentials to be transparent. I have a PhD in Art History and Archaeology from the University of Missouri. And as of two months ago, I am the National Register Coordinator for the State of Iowa. I also want to be clear that I am not here in an official capacity as an employee of the state. And I have not been involved in the nomination in that official capacity, nor will I be with any future nominations that come from Pella or Marion County because that would be a conflict of interest. So, I'm stating my educational and professional credentials, again, to be fully transparent. And because, just as some of your backgrounds as a small business owner, you know, in multiple professions across the community, my background informs my personal interest in historic preservation in Pella. So, I'm here because of my personal interest and support for this historic district. I grew up in Pella. I'm the daughter of small business owners, Sean and Jerry Rorda, the sister of a mental health professional who has offices in this community. My family has been significantly invested in making Pella a better place to live. And with my professional and personal interests, serving on this committee, this commission is how I go about doing that. So, I know you've received emails, you've heard from a number of different people about the specific benefits of historic districts. Those include planning and federal projects. So, we recently had five G towers that were slated to go in front of the Schulte House. The State Historic Preservation Office was involved in those procedures and helped move those away from historic properties and districts. All of the properties in the potential historic district would also receive those in vintages. Sorry. All right, so, they would also be eligible for grants and tax credits, which are incredibly important to consider here. Private homeowners, if they are doing substantial rehabilitations to their houses, qualify for 20 percent tax credits. And that's an incredible offset of, you know, costs. Commercial properties are also eligible for 25 percent federal tax credits. So, if you do your renovation right, you can get 45 percent of your expenditures on that building back. So, this would significantly benefit the people in those districts. Historic districts help preserve the character, the quality of the community over time. They give property owners confidence in the long-term stability of their neighborhood, which means more than likely that they are more comfortable making investments into their house. They promote pride, appreciation, and character and history of our community. And they also help encourage property owners to see themselves as stewards of these houses, right? That we are part of this larger historical narrative. Speaking about affordability of these historic properties, I own one. I, again, live at 505 Columbus Street. It's one of the oldest houses in Pella, built in the early 1860s. I was able to afford that house as a 30-year-old, paying $179,000. A lot of the new construction houses are way out of my budget. And so, being able to, one, see the quality of this house, help restore it to its original character, that has been my absolute honor and pleasure. And I just want to make sure that that is an opportunity that's open to people who come after me. There have been a few objections, but I also want to draw your attention to the fact that this is a fundamentally democratic process, that the majority of homeowners signed on to this. And that's what their will is, what they want for their community. And so, I'm asking that you acknowledge that, and also, vote yes for this historic district. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, so, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move.
DeYoung, Brander Horace, any discussion?
I do want to say just one thing. I think, Mike, you'll enjoy this. This committee saved this community $25,000 to $30,000 by doing this work themselves. And I, that is really a feather in your cap. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Brander Horace?
Yes.
DeAnstruck?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Score?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the ordinance, ordinance number 1028, entitled Ordinance Designating Schulte Garden Neighborhood as a Historic District Overlay Zone Under the Jurisdiction of the City of Pella, Marion County, Iowa. This is the first reading. Assume there's nothing to add, Mike?
You are correct, sir.
So, can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Brander Horace, Hopkins, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Brander Horace?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Score?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
DeAnstruck?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Move to waive the second and third reading and place on final reading.
Support. Okay, it's been moved and supported to waive the second, third readings on this ordinance. Any discussion? Any discussion?
That seems a bit of a rush, but no one got up and spoken opposition, so.
Is that a yes? Oh.
Okay, any-
Excuse me.
Man, I'm sorry, I stepped out of procedure.
Well, the public hearing is over, so.
All right.
Anything, any other discussion? So, so, you know, we're voting on a motion to waive the second, third reading and approve the ordinance. Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy?
Hold on, Don.
Yeah, sorry.
Excuse me, sorry. I think, I think this is involving, sorry, this is involving enough no's and ls. I think we ought to give at least one more reading, would be my advice.
Okay. All right, anything else? Okay, we will vote on the motion to waive the remaining readings of the ordinance. So, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Brander Horace?
Yes.
DeAnstruck?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
No.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Score?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Move to adopt.
Support. Brander Horace, DeYoung, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Brander Horace?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
DeAnstruck?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Score?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, special event permit request for Pella Historical City Tours, Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. And the special event permit request comes to us from the Pella Historical Society. As Mayor Ward stated, they are historic city tours. And we do have a map of the tour route listed up on the big board. Now, the proposed date for this event is Saturday, August 5th. The council ordered to approve this event. And the reason we are requiring a special event permit is the applicant is requesting closure of seven parking spaces on the north side of Franklin Street, loading and unloading. And we do have those marked in the picture in the lower right-hand portion of the slide. It's important to note that all the city apartments have reviewed this application this evening. Furthermore, we have also received a fee and insurance certificate, and city staff is recommending approval this evening.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
Go move.
Score?
DeYoung, score, any discussion?
Has this been done before?
Not outside of two little times.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, all in favor of the motion, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Score?
Yes.
Brander Horace?
Yes.
DeAnstruck?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes. Motion passed. Resolution number 6608, entitled Resolution Temporarily Closing Public Ways or Grounds in Connection with a Special Notice, Pella Historical City Tours. Sure there's nothing to add, do I have a motion for approval? Hopkins, score, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Score?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Brander Horace?
Yes.
DeAnstruck?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Resolution number 6609, entitled Resolution Approving a First Amendment to the City of Pella Flexible Spending Plan with Cisco, Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. As Mayor Ward stated, while we're entertaining here with this resolution, it is the First Amendment to the city's flexible spending plan. It is important to note that this plan was originally adopted in 2015. And it's also equally important to note that during our second meeting in July during policy and planning, we reviewed proposed changes, which from city standpoint is just housekeeping items that's meant to align the plan, the text documented the plan, and it's actually being administered. And specifically, what this amendment does, it removes all references to grace period because when we originally adopted the plan back in 2015, there was a grace period that was established for reimbursement of employee expenditures or medical expenditures on the plan. That's the one change that we have on here. So, again, from city staff standpoint, this is a housekeeping item. I'd be more than happy to explain any changes or answer any questions the council may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
Go move.
Support.
DeYoung, Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Score?
Yes.
Brander Horace?
Yes.
DeAnstruck?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Motion passed. And beyond ordinance number 1027, entitled an ordinance amending zoning ordinance of the City of Pella, Iowa by amending the boundaries of the CC district to include the property generally located at 112 East Third Street, and directing the planning and zoning director to note the ordinance number and the date of this change on the official zoning map. And this is the second reading. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, this request this evening comes from Mr. Russ Van White. Mayor Ward stated, the petition is to rezone the property that's located at 112 East Third Street from Heavy Industrial, which is M2 to Community Commercial, just orientate members in the audience and those watching at home. We have East Third Street, it's located right over here, Oskaloosa Street to the north, and Carson Street over here to the east. It's the yellow highlighted area that is the property that's being proposed to be rezoned this evening. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. As we stated earlier, the property is currently zoned M2, which is the head city's heavy industrial area. Now, up on the map, the pink highlighted areas are the heavy industrial zoning areas. And the greenish areas that we have listed up here are the CC areas. So, when we review this from a zoning standpoint and take a look at the zoning request, there's community commercial that bounces property in close proximity. And from that standpoint, from a zoning perspective, we do not believe this constitutes spot zoning. And that's always equally, that's always important to note. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the city's comprehensive plan, the feature use land map by the parcel identifies this for low-density residential. As far as this area, it's our understanding the applicant intends to build a single-family or two-family home on the property. But equally important to note, whenever you look at the city's comprehensive plan, it's important to note, you got to look at the area, not necessarily the parcel. And again, the CC is very close proximity to this parcel. So, from city staff's analysis, we do not believe this proposed zoning amendment or rezoning request constitutes spot zoning. And we also believe it aligns with the city's comprehensive plan as well. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the Planning and Zoning Commission, it is important to note that they did approve this request at their June 26th meeting. And as a result, city staff is recommending approval of the rezoning request. And I believe Mr. Russ Van White is also requesting waiver of the third reading of this ordinance as well. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions the council may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Score?
Brander Horace, score, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Brander Horace?
Yes.
Score?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
DeAnstruck?
Evstey in conflict of interest.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes. Motion passed.
Move to set aside the rules and place on third and final reading.
Support.
Okay, Brander Horace, Hopkins, a motion to set aside the third reading. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Brander Horace?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Score?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
DeAnstruck?
Evstey in conflict of interest.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Get a motion for approval of the adoption of the ordinance?
Move to adopt.
Support.
Brander Horace, DeYoung, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Brander Horace?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
DeAnstruck?
Want to guess? Staying in conflict of interest.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Score?
Yes.
Motion passed. Can I get a motion for approval of Abstract Bill Number 2132?
Move to approve and issue warrants.
Brander Horace?
Support.
Hopkins, any discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Brander Horace?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Score?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
DeAnstruck?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Council, have any other business that needs to be addressed this evening? Okay, any member of the public have any other business you'd like to address us with this evening? If so, please step forward in the microphone, state your name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Apologize for that before. I'll set a timer so I don't become verbose. That's already happened here, but... Just a few concerns I have as somebody who looks at the City of Pella and sees a city of refuge that has been that for me.
Can I get your name and-
Yes, I'm so sorry. Daniel Bryant, 406 Columbus Street. Yes. And in looking at that, there are things about Iowa versus Louisiana that encourage me, give me hope for the future. And a lot of those have to do with the fact that I own an older home, a small home. I joke, sometimes it was the cheapest thing in town with four standing walls. And I need a lot of work. And that work, I don't think should be subject to any outside influences as a historic district. Now, 406 Columbus is on the upcoming discussion. So, here tonight, I'm not in the Schulte District. But I see this wave coming from myself and others. And my only concern is that when you narrow the options on building things, you don't decrease costs, you increase costs. So, that's one thing. This doesn't, these homes don't stay cheap, historic districts don't stay cheap. Another thing is that when those costs rise, you're not just pulling a ladder up behind you. Those things won't continue to grow. It's, Lord willing, I am a multiple homeowner one day myself. But you've got multiple homeowners in this area and not small families. Is it the look you want to preserve or the culture? These are just thoughts and ideas that I have. When you're a non-contributing property, which I think I might be because mine's a 1930s house that was moved to location and frankly, is facing the wrong direction. I have great neighbors and I'm doing a lot of great work to this property. But I would be non-contributing, which would mean I would have the cost with none of the support, none of the tax breaks, none of these other things that come along with it. And again, why add extra costs there? And sorry, just make sure I'm not forgetting before. And with, another thing is that the state of Louisiana is the state of Louisiana and the state that it is in because of strings that come with outside tax dollar added money. And I say that because New Orleans has tons of historic value, more than almost any city in the entire Louisiana Purchase. And it's a slum. It can be a slum. It can be one of the worst places on earth with all that history. So, again, I ask, is this for culture or is this for buildings? That's, these are my only real concerns. Again, I just have a lot of work to do on my house. So, I just would like to do that with my own hands, my own time, and in my own way, like everyone who settled here was trying to do when they were seeking out a place of refuge. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Mary Ellen Butler, 406 Franklin. Did y'all get the flyer? It came into our mailboxes last week, and it's addressed to local postal customer. It's big. It went to, I guess, every address in Pella. It's got a lot of words. It's from the Library Board of Trustees. How much did this cost to print? And how much did this cost to mail? I can't find out the answers to either of those questions. I'm not surprised about that. I'm disappointed and frustrated, but not surprised. I've attended many, many Libraries Board of Trustees meetings. I can't imagine a less transparent group. After months of attending, they finally rearranged the seating so that the board would be facing the audience instead of each other. Finally, they put name placards in front of them so that the audience could know who they are. And that took months. I'll tell you two things that have not been discussed at Library Board meetings. One is books. Books are never discussed. Acquisition of books? No. Books desired to be on our shelves? No. Eliminating books? No. Recycling books? No. Nothing about books. Another thing that was never discussed in these public meetings was this flyer. Actually, I think it was alluded to once when I was present, and it was referred to as the draft. And discussion was tabled on the draft. After the meeting, I asked what this draft was. The answer? Oh, it's for the public. Or mine? I'm public. But that's all I got. Now we all know what the draft was. Is this transparency? One thing I learned at the last Library Board meeting is that attendance at the library is down. Is it any wonder? The lack of responsiveness to the community by the Library Board of Trustees is felt, and the people are voting with their feet. A very interesting policy of the library is found in their own documents. Library user policies. And then under that behavior in the library, it is addressed to patrons of the library. It states that no patron shall...
Ten seconds, please.
No patron shall expose any offensive images or language towards staff or patrons. But the library buys and loans books with offensive images and language.
Okay, time's up.
Sounds like a one-way street.
Thank you. Time's up. Anyone else? All right, then we will... Sorry.
Hi, go again.
You gotta come up here.
Hi, again, I'm Lauren Arora, or Bradley, sorry, used to be Lauren Arora. I live at 505 Columbus, and I am also part of the next potential historic district. I do want to address some misinformation that unless you pull a building code or unless you use federal funds to redo your property, you are not required to meet the Secretary of Interior Standards. I am also redoing my home myself. I do not have a contractor there. I am choosing not to abide by the Secretary of Standards, Secretary of Interior Standards for rehabilitation. That is a choice that you can opt into. And if you should choose to receive tax credits, which again, offset the cost of rehabilitating historic homes which are on the national register or eligible for the national register, you do abide by those. But again, that's something that you apply for and you'll opt into. You are not required to abide by those standards should you choose not to. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right, we will adjourn to a policy and planning session for two items. Start with mobile food unit proposed changes. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to update the council on this item. And just for background information for those in attendance and those watching at home, we did discuss the issue of food trucks and quite extensively in June. And as a result of that discussion, council did appoint council members Brainerhorst and Score to work with city staff to propose or develop recommendations to the current code. Now, to bring everybody up to speed, when we talk about food trucks under city code, currently they're regulated as a peddler under city code. And so specifically as opposed to food trucks, when we talk about peddlers, the only districts that they're allowed to operate in are commercially zoned properties. And they're also required to obtain a design permit for their vehicle or structure that's being used as the food truck. And that's probably the biggest concern with the food trucks that we encounter is the design permit standards as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the summary of the committee's work, and as I go on through this meeting, I would ask council member Brainerhorst and council member Score to correct me or add any pertinent information as we proceed on this item. But what the committee would like to propose to councils, instead of continuing to label food trucks as peddlers and being under the Peddler Permit Code, where you have this, where also where you have people selling goods and wares on it, is to create a zoning definition for food trucks, and they'd be called a mobile food unit. And then we also have the definition that's listed up on the board, and it's also was included in the packet as well. But by creating a separate zoning definition by this, it would allow us to tailor the rules for food trucks, which were often quite different than someone selling as a traditional peddler or a door-to-door salesman that's selling goods and wares within our community as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the first change that we have, if you recall, when we talked about peddlers and where they're currently regulated, they're allowed to operate in commercial zoning districts. So up on the attached map that we have, and we look at our community, anywhere that you see a green highlighted area, those are the commercially zoned districts within our community. What's being proposed for mobile food units is to also expand that and allow also an industrial zoning district as well as institutional zoning district. So those would be the purple areas that you see up on the board, would be the industrial and institutional zoning areas within our communities. So if council order approved this ordinance, mobile food units, which are commonly referred to as food trucks, would be allowed to operate anywhere that's green or purple up on the big board. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the design permits, generally speaking, mobile food units would not be required to conduct or required to obtain a design review permit unless they operated in the central business district, and unless they were on commercially zoned property on Washington Street from Highway 163 to the central business district, which is this green highlighted area. So this would be the areas that food trucks would still be required to obtain a design review permit. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy.
Okay.
Now, as far as the license requirements for mobile food trucks, as we mentioned before, one of the difficulties when it comes to permitting food trucks is the licensing requirement. So what we would focus on with the mobile food vendors would be the property owner would be applying for a premise permit, would also require the property owner's permission, and would also be required to provide the state of Iowa mobile food unit license. So that's where we would focus our attention on this as well. And as far as the fees, I believe there is still the same proposed fees for the existing peddler permits as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, in summary, what we're looking for is direction from the city council tonight before presenting this for formal consideration to the council. And before we go on to that, council member Brainerhorst or council member Score, is there anything else to add that I failed to mention? Now, I provided a summary of this, but the truth is, is I didn't do any of the work that came up to this point. That was all Jerry Bydis and Mandy Smith. And so I would ask Jerry and Mandy, is there anything additional that should be brought to council's attention on what's being proposed this evening?
No, no, I think it's pretty well covered in the presentation.
So, Mr. Mayor, the city staff presentation.
Problem with Thursday nights in Pella in two o'clock?
Special event permits are basic to the need for this type of a permit. So no changes to that. Those can still operate. You have no design, all under the special event.
Thank you. As a curiosity, how many real peddler permits are actually issued?
If you take out a mobile food unit, probably three a year, and they're mostly produce stamps for your sweet corn.
Okay? If we're lowering the bar, so to speak, or making it more accessible from a design... Oops, to jump to this, I guess. Would it make sense to look at changing the fees? Whether it's, you know, increasing the dollar amount or giving it a year long or whatever? As a different method to regulate, just from a standpoint of making sure that there's... I don't know. Not... I bought a, at the Rose Parade, I bought a hot dog off of a rolling tool cart that had a burner under a cookie sheet. And it was an amazing hot dog. But I thought, I don't know if that would fly here under these regulations. That's just a thought.
They would have to follow state regulations, and they'd have to show state certification.
Gotcha.
Seems to me that this was a good exercise, cleared up a lot of the... I like the redefinition. I think that's good.
Now, we're gonna get people fed quickly in our industrial areas, and that is reason to rejoice.
Okay, well, I guess, I'm thinking the consensus is to move forward for approval of the changes that were discussed inside of the...
Thank you.
Okay, and then update to the comprehensive plan, zoning code, and subdivision ordinance?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to discuss this item. This is actually an exciting item. Actually, I find it exciting. I'll speak for myself on it. As far as the city's comprehensive plan, zoning code, and subdivision ordinance, if you recall, during the 2024 budget process for this current year, we had funds included to update these, the comprehensive plan, as well as review the zoning code and subdivision ordinance. Now, a couple of things to keep in mind when we talk about the city's comprehensive plan. Generally, it's a 20-year plan. It's intended to guide development within our community. Now, the last time that we updated the plan was in 2014, and you may be looking at it and saying, well, it's a 20-year plan. What's wrong with that? According to industry standards, if they tell you that for communities are growing like Pella, and when we look at Pella in the last four years, Jerry, we're approaching about 400 new building permits for residential housing. There's been several, there's been some significant developments within our community as well. Generally, the rule of thumb is if you're growing and expanding on this, you want to look at your comprehensive plan at least updated every five to seven years. So we're past due as far as industry standards are concerned with that as well. Now, as far as the comprehensive plan is concerned, we're gonna talk about the process, what we've used in the past, and get council's feedback on that. But generally speaking, it takes about a year from the time you hire the consultant to update your comprehensive plan, because it's a considerable amount of public input. That's part of the process as well. Before we get to the comprehensive plan, let's do a brief overview of the zoning code and subdivision ordinance. And this is something that's been done, I would say, every 10 to 20 years at the city of Pella, a comprehensive review of both the zoning code and the subdivision ordinance. Now, looking back on it, I can remember an endeavor that took place in the late 90s as far as the city zoning code update, as far as the city code was concerned. Since that time, it's been somewhat done on a case-by-case basis, but there hasn't been a comprehensive review that's been done in some time. And the big thing we want to have is anytime you update the comprehensive plan, you want to make sure that it's in alignment through zoning code as well. And we've had some significant developments as well within our community. And looking at subdivision code may not be a bad idea as well, just to make sure we're all on the same page. And if there's anything that we can do, particularly with the subdivision code, I think it'd be well worth our efforts as well. Similarly, with the zoning code, the big thing with the zoning code updates is you want to make sure you have zoning definitions in your code. And you want to make sure that it's actually matching what's occurring in the development world as well. The old rule of thumb is, is once the zoning application comes in or the building permit comes in, whatever the rules are on the books at the time, that's the rules you live by. So it's very important that you have your code updated, particularly those definitions under the zoning code as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, generally, what our process is, is in the past, we've issued what's called requests for proposals for consultants to update the city's comprehensive plan. We have included a committee that's generally spearheaded by the Planning and Zoning Commission in the past, including council members as well as planning and zoning commission members. They generally review the proposals and make a recommendation to council. Then council approves the final consultant to update the comprehensive plan. From the time that the consultant is hired, it's been my experience, it takes about a year to update your comprehensive plan. And we anticipate that that process will be very similar unless we hear different from the council. We intend to follow a similar process to what's been done in the past as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, listed up here, and this is also included in the council package, just some more additional detail that we have as far as the process itself. But ultimately, Mr. Mayor, what we're talking, we'd like to see tonight with the city council is permission to start the process. And then two, if council, we'd be more than happy to entertain any questions the council may have on the process. But as part of our normal procedures, we'd ask for volunteers to help us pick out the consultant or review of proposals for the comprehensive plan update. And we'd also be interested if anyone in the council would like to serve on our community. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes our presentation. We're looking for council feedback on this item.
Okay. Thank you. Well, I definitely think we need to do it, so I don't think we'll get any objections to starting the process.
Well, one thing I don't know if it's been done in the past, you know, at the end of the, this year, the general elements of a comprehensive plan, and it talked about goals and objectives. I would really like something to be done that we look at the 2014 goals and objectives and quantify what has happened and what hasn't. And it might be legitimate reasons why a goal wasn't met. But I think if we just do these, and then don't take a look back to what we looked at, I think that would be an important part of this plan myself anyway.
We'd be happy to report that back as far as this process. And I think that's a very good point, is where do we stand on the strategic goals and objectives that were part of the 2014 plan? I am happy to report the main goal was additional housing within our communities. And I can tell you, we've made significant progress on that one. But we'll be more than happy to talk about the other ones that were included as well.
So I, yeah, as far as, if everybody think about it, if it's something that interests you and want to be part of the process, you need to let me or Mike know. Yeah, I think an analysis of where we come is critical first, and then forward. Okay, anything else? All right. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Man, Score, all in favor, please say yes. Oppose, no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Dan Strachan?
Yes.
Score?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Brainerhorst?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes, from Oklahoma.
Hopkins?
Yes.
We are adjourned.